Ladies and gentlemen, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. We will get going. Joe, report of the chair. We have some excellent donations we want to brag about.
Absolutely. I want to thank a number of people. First, I want to thank Lori O'Driscoll, the mother of Kiara O'Driscoll, who passed away from a seizure disorder in 2017. Lori has continued to honor Kiara by sponsoring a trail run at Great Hollow Lake every year. With the proceeds, Lori's been donating the funds to support a number of different causes, but for us, she's donated those funds to support the implementation of Unified Sports at the elementary schools. So this year, Lori is once again donating $2,500 for Unified Sports at Stepney-Fun Hollow in Monroe. Also, I'd like to thank Steve, who brought this one to my attention. The Muralliteron family is offering up to $20,000 to be used for $1,000 scholarships to support two students per year who are looking to pursue a career or a future in mathematics. The family graciously offered these funds based on the exceptional education and support that their kids received when they were at MASC throughout their time in the Monroe Public Schools. Currently, I'll be asking you all to approve a donation of $10,000, which is to be used for the next five years, and then I think they're going to make that next $10,000 available after that. And then finally, the class of 1975.
Mine, babe.
Was that you? All right, Chair. All right. Thank you. All right. They're looking to donate $1,200 to create a scholarship for two graduating students who are looking to study fine arts, music, or theater. And then with the remaining $200, they would like to donate that back to the MASC Theater Program for supplies and whatnot. So, very fortunate. A lot of, you know, close to $14,000 in donations tonight, with actually a possibility of another $10,000 in a few years.
Yeah, that's great. So the Board wants to thank all three of those organizations and people. Thank you very much for that. It helps us out a lot. It's phenomenal. Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to public participation. Anyone here for public participation? Anyone here for public participation? No one signed up? Okay, hearing and seeing none, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Any Board members have any comments or questions on the minutes? Okay, how about the approval of wires and warrants? Any questions for Joe or Ron on that? Everybody looked at Dennis? No? How about budget transfers?
They're creeping up.
Yeah, yeah, we know that.
I have one question.
Go ahead.
Is transportation sustainable? I mean, we're getting hit pretty heavy on the currently, mostly special, I trust, but how long can we go before we scream, "Ron, find a solution"?
I mean, is it sustainable this year? Yes.
Okay.
I mean, I think I'm not as worried about transportation as I am health insurance.
Well, that's a given always.
Yeah.
That's...
Joe, we've had some retirements?
We do. Our regular retirement program is offered in years ending with an odd number. So seeing as this year is actually an even year, as has been the practice for almost my entire career, we're offering a modified retirement program that delays the payment of incentives out an additional year for those folks that decided to retire. So we offered this to the MBA in September, and we wish each of these teachers the best as they put their final touches on their teaching career come this June. We'll celebrate them again at the June Board of Education meeting. We'll celebrate them at the end of the year celebration as well. But a special good luck to Victor Alfandre, who's Special Education, Alternative Education teacher; Donna Haversatt, kindergarten teacher at Stepney Elementary School; Kathy Keen, school counselor at MASC; Laura Logerman, grade three teacher at Stepney Elementary; Christine McHugh, specialized teacher at Monroe; Fran Pacico, who's a transition counselor at MASC; and Beth Young, who's a school counselor at MASC. There's actually a script there on here. Carrie Neaton, we wish her the best too. We think she's retiring as well, but she's a parent educator, and I'm not totally sure yet if she is retiring. So that's on the agenda, but you don't have to accept that one yourself. Usually, it's just certified staff. So I wish all of them the best.
Absolutely. It's nice that on our side, we can plan and they can plan and...
Exactly.
...all of that. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Dennis, seconded by Jerry. Any further discussion or comments? Hearing none? All in favor? You okay, Alan?
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor? Sorry, everybody unanimous? Thank you very much. Motion passes. Reports of the committees? We're going to start with our students. You're missing one.
Good evening. I hope you're all having a marvelous Monday. As the weather gets colder, many clubs are taking advantage of the fall holidays, particularly the junior student golf, with their spooky car wash next Sunday at Monroe. All donations and proceeds will go towards the prom. And I have to say, as Rhea and I are experts at car washes, we will definitely be showing our faces. This past week, MASC Robotics went to University of Maine-Arona to compete against teams from all over the country and Canada. They were very successful with Team 4478B winning the design award and 4478N winning the judges' award. We're very excited to see how these teams grow throughout the year. Also, as October flies by, many seniors, including ourselves, are cracking down on our college applications, with early action deadlines taking place on November 1st. In fact, this upcoming weekend is a homework-free weekend for this very reason, and I know I'll definitely be taking advantage of it.
Last week, juniors took their PSAT. Hopefully, the stress of testing is off their shoulders for now, and they can relax a little until March. For seniors, we got a very nice late arrival that day, but don't worry, we have plenty to worry about, too. November 3rd is the day early capstone presenters get to show off their hard work from the past few months. From the doctor's office to football coaching, this year's seniors have done it all. For a quick sports update, girls' field hockey and boys' soccer are currently playing their SWC games. And then tomorrow, girls' volleyball and girls' soccer are hosting SWCs here. Later this week, boys' golf will be playing at their state's game. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you. Report to the Board. Health and Safety Committee met on the 9th of this month. Drills are being conducted. Everything was reviewed. I signed the new plan in place, so thank you, Sheila, for all of that. That's all I really have to report on that. Any other committees? No? Okay, we'll go to the report of the superintendent. Joe?
You got it. The first one is the review of the September Fund Activity Statement. I don't know if anyone has any questions for Ron on that.
Transportation?
That's the most. So I did, I don't know if, I'll field questions first, if anyone's... Dennis?
I already asked you. You said we're sustainable, but...
The tuition public is, you know, sticking out like a sore thumb, and that's due to excess cost. It's shown a deficit of $993,000, but $997 was budgeted for excess costs, so not to worry.
Not to stare anybody down, but...
Nothing to see here.
The other two things, disposal services and software renewals are both tracking negative. I did speak with them, both Dan Krosick and Paul Course, and neither are concerned at this point, but they do not want to put a budget transfer forward because they feel they're going to be probably pulling it for multiple places, and they'd rather wait till the spring. But they're both aware of it and not concerned really. So that's pretty much it.
Go ahead, Dennis.
Was the St. Vincent's expensive Sentinel event, or is that going to be ongoing? Do you remember?
St. Vincent's?
St. Vincent's. Continue, you know, it's education. I'm assuming it's special. Sorry.
Yeah, no, no, yeah, it's tuition. It's a school.
Right.
Sorry, yeah, it's a school.
So it's ongoing? Wasn't it...
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'm looking at those numbers too, Dennis, but I think after Jen's last report last month, we understand where the trend is in the high-cost students that came in. So it's to be expected with transportation and the tuition with that, that that's going to happen, so...
Tuition went up 4%, right? You said, Joe?
For some places.
Yeah.
Even more.
Even more. And transportation is between like 5% and 8%. I mean, they're going up.
What are, can I ask?
Go ahead.
Like, what are other towns doing that? Talk to them.
They're in the same boat as we are. We all try to ride share if we can. We do make phone calls and we try to ride share when we can. It just depends on the payers of the students and their term on the power services for them, but we are trying, they're all the same. Some schools have purchased a couple of lands and are utilizing that to transport kids back and forth to their own placements.
Yeah, it's a problem everywhere.
Yep.
Yeah, it is.
When I'm at work, I hear them calling other towns about ride shares and stuff. The price is out of control.
It's also a shortage. I mean, all bus companies pretty good in meeting the demand right now, right?
Meeting the demand of getting kids to and from school.
Regular days, but not the after-hours stuff.
Yeah.
Okay. So if they keep going up, we'll put a monolite system in. This is ridiculous. It's just absurd, you know? Four-plus million, right?
Show up at the state, and they'll tell you they don't want to hear it.
They don't want to hear anything.
No.
All right.
Rant over.
The second piece on there is just the Human Resources Budget Transfer. That's just, that was just to cover a, a lot of times at the schools, we either hire a substitute teacher or we'll hire an intern for the year, and this was just transferring the money from the substitute teacher line to the intern line to hire an intern at Stepney. And then my last piece, I know the big, the assessment presentation coming up, my last piece was just the budget liaisons. I just moved those, I just moved those forward as requested at the last meeting. So everybody, whatever you did the year before, I just moved everybody down one. There will obviously be some changes in November. You know, I know Justin's up, he's not running, so there will be some changes. So whoever is in that...
Will adjust it.
We will adjust when the time comes.
Questions for Joe? No? Okay. We have a presentation. Mike?
Thank you. I want to thank Mike and actually all of the instructional leaders who were behind him and the principals to put together both the assessment book as well as Mike's presentation. We're going to do this a little bit differently than, a little bit different than the way we've done it in the past. Mike's going to do the entire presentation, kind of look at it as a, you know, kind of a district presentation, instead of it being chopped up and disjointed with different people speaking. But that being said, you know, I'm hoping that this can be, and I know Mike is the same, as much of a dialogue as a monologue, you know? So if you have questions while Mike's presenting, please feel free to ask. I know that the people sitting behind him are eager to, you know, address some of the questions, talk about some of the things that they've been doing and all of that. So, you know, like in years past, we have, you know, we've identified areas to celebrate and obviously areas where we need to grow. Mike's going to share all of that with you. I'll share some targets with you, you know, places that I think is feasible for us to move forward in the next few years. But when I meet with the administrative team, just to you, our conversation's kind of sat around, you know, my goal is that we are at, you know, 80% proficiency or at or above the DIRTT average, understanding that we're in DIRTT V, which is probably the second most competitive DIRTT in the state. So, you know, we're in good company with a lot of really positive schools. I know Mike, the principals, and some of the instructional leaders have been visiting some other districts as well to look at some best practices and whatnot. So I'll turn it over to Mike now.
Thanks, Joe. Like Joe said, so this is, these are the assessment results from the spring. We get these sort of encumbered. We're not allowed to look at them publicly and share them publicly, but we get them in May. We do, we do a data summit the last, right, the day, right after school ends, all the administrators. We come here and we spend an entire day doing a data summit. So we've been diving deeply into this work for the last few months, and it really did inform much of the work we did at the admin retreat and also a lot of the work that we've been doing for professional development this fall and what we will continue to do in two weeks at our next Professional Development Day. Like Joe said, of course, there's going to be the requisite questions slide at the very end, but it'd be great if you're just asking questions as we come along and don't keep them waiting till the end. So that's the rule for tonight. The booklet in front of you has, you know, a lot of the same information that we've had in years past. So on page five, there's the definitions page, but certainly I've been really instructed, watch the ed you speak, Mike. Make sure you define your acronyms. If there's anything that you need defining, just stop me and like, what does that phrase mean, Mike? And I'm happy to do so. All the test data's there, and the appendix is all the DIRTT comparison data that we had always traditionally shown. And then, of course, there's a ton of information about the students who are no longer with us, who's graduated last June. One way, one thing that, just a reminder, because I don't know how often we say this with these assessments. So the three state mandated assessments that we talk about, the Smarter Balance Assessment, which we have in both ELA and math and are given every year in grades three through eight, the Next Generation Science Standards Assessment, which is given five, eight, and 11, and then finally, the School Day SAT in both ELA and math, which is grade 11. What they're assessing is the student's ability to meet grade-level standards. And that's important because it helps drive so much of the work we do. Yes, it is a snapshot of that day and where the kids were, are there mitigating, you know, situations sometimes, for sure. But overall, as a, you know, sort of grand scheme, it helps us understand where those students are in that grade, in that academic area, as far as grade-level standards go. And a couple weeks ago, I don't know if you remember, I came and I presented about the high-quality instructional model. And we were talking about the HQI, as we've been talking, as we refer to it, since February. A group of ILs and myself went to like a two-day conference all about utilizing HQI to really drive your work as a school system. And really, what a high-quality instructional model is, is what happens every day in the classroom. Not the intervention, not the special programming, the everyday, day-to-day with teachers. And as a group of administrators and teachers and coaches, we came up with that long phrase of, "We believe all students can meet and exceed grade-level standards through high-quality instruction that combines engaging, complex thinking tasks with specific feedback, and a supportive culture that promotes a growth mindset for all." A mouthful, and certainly not something you're going to tap, you know, you're going to tap all in one year. So we took it down to that focus for this year, being about grade-level power standards, and power standards being those most important standards in order for students to really meet goals, are used to design what are learning goals or learning intentions and success criteria for each lesson. So before we even, before the kids even took this test, we knew this was the direction we wanted to go in. And given that these tests, these assessments, are about students meeting grade-level standard, it fits, you know, nicely into what our plans are. So so far this year, we've been spending a lot of time working with our teachers about what are the grade-level standards and how do we design learning intentions and success criteria? Because when students know those things, they tend to be able to meet them better. Okay? So you're going to see, you're going to hear HQI a lot, but when I say HQI, it's what's happening in every class every day. That's really what we're looking for. So we're going to start with S-Back, the Smarter Balance Assessment, and ELA. And if you look at those scores, we're doing very well. We are above the DIRTT average in overall in grades three through eight. In grades three and four, we are a little below the DIRTT average, but then you see in the other ones, we're above the DIRTT average and far above the DIRTT average in some of those grades. So we're doing well. We're well above the state average in English Language Arts, you know, across the board. So we're really proud of the work that's being done in that area. And if you look at the, what we call the...
I'm sorry. Go ahead, go ahead. One second. What's the difference with the 21, 20? I mean, what's the numerated... Why is that...
Because there's, because there's 21, because of, there's regional school districts, and then they don't become regional afterwards, so there's more school districts overall.
There's some K6 schools.
Yep.
And Woodbridge and Orange get counted, but then Region 5 gets counted.
So it's like, they're considered separate ones.
Thanks for clarifying.
Before I move on, sorry. Any other questions?
No, thanks for clarifying.
Perfect. No worries. Now, if you look at the cohort data, so this is, for example, in that top purple one, so students in 2024 in grade three, they're at 67.4% at goal. And then when they got to fourth grade, they got to 70.4% of those same students were at goal. And every single year, they've gone up. So it's a, it's testimony that the students, where they were the year before, each group, each cohort grew, which is fantastic, which is, that's the direction we definitely want to go in every, for every, in every area and every grade. So we're really proud about the work that's done there. Does that make sense?
So you understand, so the kids in grade three last year were grade four this year. Three points, two points.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay, in math, in the S-Back, we are unfortunate, we're below the DIRTT average. We're well above the state average, but as we compare ourselves with like districts, we're definitely not, you know, where we want to be as far as math goes. Just a reminder also, and we talked about this, this was our first year of full implementation of illustrative math. And, you know, as we learned through a lot of our, you know, consultants that come in, the first year of implementation is generally a building year. And, you know, when we got these scores back, one of the things we were saying, is this, you know, is this a good curriculum for us? Is this curriculum, you know, right? And what Evelyn and Kevin did is, you know, at a deeper dive, we saw that there were these major pockets of success. So, for example, at some schools and some grade levels, the entire grade level were at like 79% at goal, which proves to us that, okay, the curriculum works. It's probably an implementation, an implementation consistency issue, which is bound to happen when you have new teachers learning a new, new program. So what we're going to talk about in a little bit, when we talk about our interventions, is taking those pockets of success and expanding what those teachers did, what those teams did, district-wide. You know, a first year of implementation of anything, and something like IM, I think last year Kevin and Evelyn did a little bit of practice with you guys, how different IM is. It's going to have, it does have a learning curve, and it has a learning curve for some students also. So we definitely are going to focus on that work this year, and we already have been. And we're going to talk some more specifics about what that work looks like. We also saw that in the cohort, and that we did not see that cohort growth until we moved from the upper middle school. So we saw slight cohort growth, sixth to seventh grade and seventh to eighth grade. The other grade levels, we did not see that cohort growth.
So there's an obvious problem with transitioning from fifth grade to sixth grade.
With our, with the math in this, yep, that was a big, that's a big drop. You know, we, go ahead.
Is curriculum in alignment? I mean, that's...
Well, you know, the thing about IM is, it's actually the first time we've had an aligned curriculum K-8. Before, our curriculum was not aligned K-8 prior to this. And this is the first time it is the same program K-8. It used to be big ideas, and then it was a mix of things at the elementary school. Kevin, do you want to add a little bit about, Kevin, Evelyn?
Okay. They're on both sides of me. I was going to say that the one thing is, last year was the first year, fifth grade was working in Illustrious Mathematics, so they're now in our building as sixth graders this year, so we have now that experience with the elementary kids coming into the building with some experience with the Illustrious Math program. So I'm hoping that helps with the transition from, from fifth to sixth, as they're coming with some experience with it.
Because last year, they just had like one unit. They experienced one unit.
But this sixth grade class had a full year of IM fifth, so...
What about teacher training? How's that been going?
Do you want to talk about, we brought in people from, do you want to talk about how you're doing the training? I mean, that's, we have another slide, but let's talk about it now. Want to talk about what you're doing with teacher training?
Yes, sir. This year, I started doing lab sites in every elementary school. So there's one to two teachers in every building who were part of our pockets of success with our ESPA data this past year. So teachers are doing peer observations in each of those classrooms to see best practices in action. So that's one approach that we're taking with, with professional development. Sometimes, teachers need to see things in action to be able to bring them back to their own classrooms and implement. And then in addition to that, for professional development, thanks to all of you, we have a math consultant. So that, that consultant is essentially a coach for all three buildings. So she is currently doing coaching cycles with not only our newest teachers to the district, because we have quite a few, but she's also doing coaching cycles with teachers who, whose scores may not have been up to that average that we're looking for. So we're really getting into classrooms very directly to show what that success with IM looks like.
Any problems with teacher buy-in?
Naturally, yes.
How's that being addressed?
I'm, I'm a pretty persuasive person, but I think what, what really helps is when, when teachers see that kids in Monroe, kids in their own building are successful with the program, that's, that's the easiest way to get, to get buy-in. When they see it actually working, they're much more apt to, to buy it. So just this past week, I did a midday presentation with a fifth-grade teacher at Monroe who was sharing his successes with, with teachers. And I think when, when teachers can hear from other teachers that it's working, rather than, you know, coming from the top down, the buy-in starts to build. And so that is, it's an everyday effort to make sure the buy-in is there, but it is happening.
And just to build on, Evelyn had shared the data with teachers, and you'll share the story better, but she shared the data with them, and rather than say, like, look at what this grade level in this building did, one of the grade levels actually bubbled up and was like, "We want to know what," I don't know what grade level was, "but this, this group of teachers is doing." So they recognized that there was a pocket of success and actually, you know, bubbled up and wanted to know what they were doing to have that pocket of success. Did I capture that story correctly?
Yes, perfect.
Yeah, so that buy-in, like, where it came from them, rather than her saying, "Look, you know, look what they did," they actually said it, and she capitalized on that for when she did what she did.
Yeah, I was just wondering, like, what happens if there's not buy-in? Like, how is that generally addressed by administration, obviously? How does that work?
I mean, we, as an administrative team, one of the reasons why we're talking about this sort of district-wide too, it is not Evelyn's problem. It is not, you know, that thing. Like, we're all being trained in IM, so we know what the look-for's are. We're in classrooms. We're in there to really support students, support students and support teachers. I think teachers see that this is now a group effort, and we're there to, we're there to lead. We're committed to IM, and we're all knowledgeable about IM. So I think the idea of these coaches, these folks who are around to support, they know why they're in the classroom. They know that they want to, you know, they want to do better. All teachers want to be successful. And I think they want, they know that, some of them know that they need a little bit more support to be, do so. And now that we're able to provide that support, where I will say, we didn't always have the people to provide that support, it's made a difference. So I think that is, you know, Nicole's been an incredible addition to provide that for us.
Sure. You had asked a follow-up a bit about PD. So when you break down this data, which, I mean, I'm sure I can share, but there's, there's three main claims on ESPA that kids are assessing. The first is concepts and procedures. That's like your general, like, you're given a math problem, you solve it, you put in the answer. We did fairly well in that claim across the district. Second claim is communicating reasoning. That's where kids have to actually explain and justify their answers in words. That was a very weak area for us. As we had shared previously last year, most curriculums focus on that concepts and procedures. IM also targets that communicating reasoning piece, and it's very challenging for kids. They, they can follow a procedure, but can they actually explain why they're following that procedure and why it works? And then the third and fourth claims get scored together. That's problem solving and data analysis. So those were, those were two areas, communicating reasoning, problem solving, and data analysis were our two lowest claims, communicating reasoning being our lowest. So this year, um, our biggest focus in math is, uh, communicating reasoning. So every single PD that I've been giving, whether it's a midday or, uh, you know, a full-on professional development session, um, we're focusing in on, on, uh, a structure to help support that communicating reasoning, which is claim, evidence, reasoning. We use it in science, we use it in social studies, now we're using it in math. So kids have one single structure to follow to be able to communicate their thinking. So that's one way that we're gonna target that claim. We're also focusing in on, um, fluency building. So a lot of teachers were, um, really wanting, uh, kids to be more fluent with their math facts. And so that's another piece of the puzzle that we're starting to implement. We changed some of our schedules around at the elementary level to include, uh, more time for math centers to build that fluency in. I've been working with the, um, special education department. So, um, you know, these scores not only reflect our, our tier, all tier-one students, but they also reflect the scores of our special education students. So working hand-in-hand with them is also going to help support the implementation of IM, because they're the ones that are supporting outside of the classroom. And then the other big piece of the puzzle is the synthesis part of an IM lesson. That's the very end of the math lesson, um, where teachers can provide that direct instruction. And we didn't really capitalize on it last year. This year, we're making a, a concerted effort to make sure that we're ending lessons with that success criteria, um, u- through the synthesis. And so that's another piece of the puzzle that I think is gonna help support, um, the growth of these math scores.
Mike, if I may.
Of course.
Alan's trying to politely say that the buy-in is not optional.
Absolutely.
And that's the message from this board.
Right.
And, and I wanna be very clear about that. I believe everybody in this room is working very hard at that, and we appreciate that. But if there's any resistance to it, it's, we're not gonna deal with it.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Dan. We've been, we've been dealing with this issue at fifth and sixth grade for ten years. And it's gotta get fixed. And I just heard a whole bunch of yeses. It's before Julia, so I'm not picking on Julia. Or anyone else, Mike, you know, not you, not Kevin, I'm not picking, I'm not pointing any fingers. But I, I, I'm sorry, I've been sitting here nine and a half years, and they tank when they go into middle school.
Absolutely.
So I appreciate all the hard work, keep it up. Identify where it is, because we wanna attack it no matter where it is.
You know, and one of the things that you talk about, you know, uh, how aligned it is, like CER, for example, which we talked about, that is all now in the, it's now in...
Claiming evidence reasoning.
Oh, they claim evidence reasoning, thank you. It's now in all our middle school classes, too. Like, we're, we're saying, like, we don't need to change cour-, we shouldn't be changing course when we get into middle school. We shouldn't be, that transition, you know, there's enough transition adolescent-wise. Let's make that academic transition as smooth as possible. You know, so they're, they're talking about the same ideas. And that's what's good about IM, these students coming in, like, they'll understand the processes. They're talking about synthesis, you know, at the middle school level. So all those sort of things. To, to that point, I do, I will say, I think the teachers know we're, we're committed to this program. I mean, there is, every, every, every moment we can, we're there with it.
Yeah, and in the same breath, if you need something, we wanna know.
Absolutely, thank you. I'm gonna switch over to, uh, science. Continued to do very nicely in science. You know, six in the DURG, um, a little lower in eighth and eleventh grade, but still in the seventies. Um, and if you look year-over-year, a little dip in fifth grade, but still at seventy-six. And then went up in eighth grade, and look at those eleventh grade proficiency numbers, that's phenomenal. Um, there was a huge change in some instructional, um, and curricular, uh, decisions that were made. And you can see that the, that eighteen percent increase is just phenomenal, which is, which is great. So that's where we wanna be. These, these are the numbers we wanna see in science, so.
It's interesting that the, um, science in math uses the same, um, part of the brain to problem solve. So if you could do that in science, you should be able to do that in math. They're all reasoning, your hardcore executive reasoning skills and all that.
And then as we move over to the high school and look at the SATs, there's two numbers there that we wanna talk about. So there's the mean score, so that's the average score of all, you know, all those eleventh graders in both English and math. And then there's also the percentage at goal. And so the percentage at goal is more of that number that, that coincides with that S-VAC or NGSS number. And for SAT, the English goal is four-eighty, so seventy-eight percent of our eleventh graders hit four-eighty. And then the math goal is five-thirty, and we have forty-seven percent of the students meet, um, that, that goal. We're obviously well above the state average. Are we where we wanna be in the DURG, or for students, not, not where we want to be? We are, we saw an increase from last year in both those areas, and wanna get, you know, certainly higher. And we're, we did, we started that work with the SAT Task Force last year, and continuing that, um, the work that we've done, um, from last year to try to improve that.
Mike, in all of these, the state averages are very scary. And I, and I'm glad we're so much higher than all of that.
Yes, that is true. I am too.
Yeah, it's not a very high standard, the state average.
Thriving for mediocrity.
No, yeah.
Oh, there, now it's...
So I've, we've talked a little bit, um, you know, Mike has laid out the, uh, the cohort, um, data for us. And so one of the things that we've done is, we talked about, I listen, we wanna make, we call smart goals, specific, variable, achievable, reliable, and time-bound. So what we've done for this year is, we try to make reasonable smart goals. Like I said earlier, my goal is ultimately for us to be at, to be at or above the DURG average, or eighty percent, that's our ultimate goal, but we gotta take steps to get there. So for ELA next year, we're, this, this, uh, this column right here reflects our, or this row here, column, reflects our, you know, our goal for next year. So, you know, we thought a, you know, three to four, five percent increase from, you know, from year to year in the cohort is a reasonable, is a reasonable advancement from year to year with the, with the goal getting to that DURG average or eighty percent. You'll see, you know, third, third to fourth next year, these are the kids that took it this year, looking to go up a little bit more than three percent, you know, close to four percent here, you know, three percent, about three percent.
Yep.
For the next one. That one, that was in the ELA, those had all gone up. If you remember what Mike showed us earlier, in ELA, we had, we've been making that progress. And it's just consistently made that progress there. The math goal, wanna be a little bit more ambitious at, at some times. You know, again, looking to, looking to increase from the cohort to the cohort from last year to this year. So this year's grade four, this is where we want them to be. This year's grade five, a little bit, uh, this, a little bit higher jump. And, you know, we think that could be reasonable, given that they were at almost seventy-two percent, you know, two years, two years prior. So you see that again with this, you know, grade six, we'd like to see them in grade five, they're at sixty-two and a half. Like to see them go to sixty-seven, almost, almost a five percent increase. But once again, you know, look where they were in grades three and four, and then they dropped here in grade five. Grade, grade six to grade seven, grade seven to grade eight. So we're just, we're giving ourselves, you know, part of our, uh, part of one of my, my goals for student achievement is to have, you know, something measurable that we can look at. So we'll look at this again at the, uh, at the data summit.
SATs, too.
And then the, the last one we have here is the SAT. I thank Steve for working on this. And again, less, a little bit less concerned with the, uh, the, I'm sorry, the...
Mean score.
The mean score. Only because the, the mean score can be, outliers can pull it, you know, one way or the other. Knowing also that if we get more kids to the, to the goal, to be college and career-ready, that's only gonna, uh, totally gonna raise the average of the mean score. So next year, we're looking, increase here of, to eighty-one percent for evidence-based reading and writing, and then a pretty significant goal to increase in math, forty-seven percent to fifty-five percent there, year to year. So it just gives us, it gets, given us targets and stuff that we're gonna share back with the, uh, with the teachers.
Ken, next year, when we're going over this, can we have those goals? Should we include it?
Only if we achieve them.
Can we have median mode?
Forget what they say now, because if it's different numbers, I'm gonna, no, absolutely, absolutely.
So Mike, just to reinforce what you said, if you could go back one more slide.
Sure.
So you're telling me then, in grade four of twenty-twenty-five, they were at sixty-four point eight?
Yep.
And that wasn't because of IM that they went from seventy-one to sixty-four, was it?
Well, that was the fir-, yeah, that was the first year of implementation. So it could, yes. So hopefully, the goal is that with more consistent implementation and the support we're giving, we'll be able to get a five percent increase from that cohort next year.
Okay.
This, well, this year.
And then one thing I'll say about the, the curriculum, it's being used by the most successful district, uh, district in our DURG right now. And probably close to the highest in the state right now.
Yeah.
So it's not a curriculum, you know, we know it's not. Yeah, it's, it's, it was the first year of full implementation, so, you know, there were some bumps in the road, but...
Who's the highest, Joe?
Madison.
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 Unbelievable.
Yeah.
How long have they been using it?
Yeah, I mean, exactly.
So we're looking at improvement strategies from a three-pronged approach this year, and we've talked about a bunch of them already, and I'll just reiterate a couple things. Tier ones, or day-to-day instruction, what's happening in the classroom, intervention, our intervention programs. And lastly, family engagement, which we haven't really talked about that often when we talk about assessments, but it's such an important, um, goal for us to be able to address this year. So tier-one instruction, that first thing, that HQI, that high-quality instruction, that focus being that we are setting grade level and exceeding expectations for all learners in the classroom. That teachers understand what the standards are, they're clear to students about what the learning intention for each day is, for each courses, for each class, excuse me, and then how they achieve that. So that's what the success criteria are. We know that professional learning and what we talked about, those models, those pockets of success, it's what's, is what is the most experiential, experential, X, can I say that right? Experiential, thank you. Experiential professional learning is proven research-wise to be the thing that actually changes, moves the needle. And so having these coaches, seeing somebody work with them, co-teaching with another teacher on this, that's what's gonna make the changes occur. Not the stand and deliver, that doesn't, that doesn't move the needle the way it is in the classroom, make that work happen. So that's what we're trying to really focus on this year. Evelyn spoke about it, we, um, Steve came and talked to you last year about it. Time is one of the few resources we have that we can really work with. You know, at the elementary level, we completely changed the instructional minutes this year. For the first time, both third, fourth, and fifth grade have that math centers time, which is the application of it, it helps with the fluency. Um, there's a de-, uh, differentiated instruction block that's happening in the classroom for both math and literacy, that's allowing that extra level of work, that extra time on task. At the, um, at the high school, moving to the modify block has added a lot of instructional time also that we know we needed, and we're working with teachers about how to pace lessons now, going back to a forty-two, forty-five minute block period. Um, and at the middle school, really looking at our flexible period, our pause period, and really privileging that math intervention, you know, among that. You know, Julia talked to her faculty, um, earlier this month to say, look, this is where we are. This is what, this is, this is the area that we really need to focus our attention on. I don't think anybody wants, you know, to look at those scores again next year. So we're really gonna privilege this time with math. All right, Joe has mentioned, you know, we really spent, this year, we really dove deep into best practices from other districts. Been on a Zoom call with Madison, talked to Newtown. Um, a bunch of us went up to Cheshire. Cheshire's a really great system for us to partner with. We're very similar to Cheshire in size, in, um, you know, socioeconomic. Their assistant superintendent's awesome person who wants to partner with us. Um, they saw huge gains this year, and she really said it was about that tier-one instruction. We were talking to them back in February about their high-quality instructional model, because they were, they're about a year or two ahead of us with that work. So we've been really partnering with them a lot. And the nice thing is, they're not gonna come down and see us, because they're gonna probably do bookworms, so they wanna come and spend time. So we're having that relationship with them. On Wednesday, Kevin and I are going to visit our friends over in Trumbull to see what they're doing at their middle school to achieve the scores they're getting. So that's been important, um, let's see, oh, sorry. We're also a part, Joe, myself, Marissa, the three elementary principals. Tara, we have an MLL teacher. We are part of the State Science of Reading Masterclass. So every month, we go, um, to either Rocky Hill or Bristol, they have a national speaker. We are paired with an executive coach and a reading coach, and they will come and they'll do visits, they're actually coming tomorrow, to work with the team about looking at our literacy plan also. We have been partnered with an affinity, um, district. For us, we were partnered with West Haven, which is interesting, we had our first meeting with them, and you say, what can we learn? What can we learn from each other? It's amazing what you can learn from a district you don't think is very much like you. They do so much work with MLL. We already, after that first ish, after that first meeting, we're like, wow, we came back with so much from that. So really working, I haven't seen us work with as many other districts that we have this year to sort of move us forward to. And there's definitely a feeling in the state about that. You know, there's a lot more of this happening with the caregivers. Um, the second one being intervention. As we look at the high-quality instructional focus, intervention is about providing access points for students to meet grade-level skills. Instead of keeping that gulf so wide, that achievement gap so wide, intervention is about giving kids access to that grade-level skill. Cause otherwise, we're just gonna see that, we're gonna just see those numbers continue to widen as we go through the middle school and the high school. We're looking at the resources we have. You all are wonderful with us, with our budget. We have programs like Lexia, we have programs, um, which is a reading program that we utilize with both our MLL and some of our struggling readers. Um, we have Bridges Intervention, which is a program we use in the elementary school with math. We're looking at those resources and trying to, um, maximize what they could provide for students. We had a seventh gr-, there were seventh-grade Skills and Strategies, which is sort of the extra English class for some struggling readers in seventh grade. They, um, adopted Lexia the second half of the year. The percentage of kids who, you know, made goal in seventh grade from that group from the year before was amazing. We saw some great gains from that, so really trying to maximize that. The next thing, which is MTSS deeper dive, you know, MTSS is the multi-tiered systems of support, which is like, how do we support kids? We give kids those universal screeners, and we figure out what do they need from there? We're spending a lot more time with the actual, um, data and being like, wow, is this really affluent? Like, does the kid not, does the kid not know his facts? Or is he just like a, does he not pay attention to his addition? And so instead of just throwing a kid into tier-two intervention because he didn't do well on the test, we're taking another step before that and going, what is, we're trying to diagnose, what is this, what does this student actually need? Because what we also saw on this test, when we, on this, on this assessment data, when we did a deep dive, is the amount of students that are so close to meeting that grade-level goal, and what can we do for those students, too? So we're hoping that that deeper dive helps us address those students. And finally, the interventionists and specialists, you know, we now have MLL teachers in our buildings. You know what I mean? We have those three full-times, you know, two half-time at the secondary, and the two full-time in the, um, elementary. It's an incredible difference for what those students are able to, um, receive as far as access to grade-level work. Um, the interventionist, the, um, math specialists, um, the training that we're doing of our interventionists, we just gotta, we were lucky, we got a, um, ELA interventionist finally at, at the middle school, who was a, who was a teacher and just did not wanna, you know, just wants to come back for this, and we're very lucky to have a certified teacher. So we're really trying to maximize their work with students also. Question about intervention? All right, finally, the family engagement piece. And the HQI, the high-quality instructional focus here, is that we accept that we need to do a better job talking to parents about what grade-level skills look like. That they need to understand, like, during the school year, this is what your students, this is what you should hope your students are going to learn. This is where they should be. Because when teach, when parents know that, they'll support us in getting, getting them there. So we've talked, we've been talking a lot about, like, what resources are we sending home? Are we sending home the U-Fly phonics resources with a video for them to understand how to use this at home to support your reader? So this is really what a lot of the work going forward, um, this year is, is how do we communicate with home and allow them to really be that third part of the triangle with, you know, teacher, student, and family? Because we know that can make a huge difference. Um, and we're already talking about what workshops and presentations do we need to have? We need to either bring back, like, our literacy nights and our math nights, or have for the first time, where, you know, our MLL teachers are gonna do like a whole district-wide MLL night for those, for those parents, so they get information about how to support their students throughout this. So, um, that's a big piece for us, and, um, you know, we'll hopefully be talking more about that family engagement. Okay? So, go ahead, yep.
Last year, maybe it was last year, maybe it was before that, we talked a lot about how students have parents who don't speak English. Right, how's that impacting, how's that contrast to all the study, other talents that you're looking at? And we have a high level of spec ed, we have a high level of non-speaking, you know, um, non-English speaking parents.
You know, when I did the, um, and I actually did those numbers, and I took the, I took the numbers of special education, MLL, and actually, um, how much we spend per pupil, I gotta be honest with you, ours is no higher than anybody else around us. And there's plenty of districts around us with higher MLL who are doing, who's achieving better. So it's telling me that that's, and those are those districts that we're talking to.
Math is kind of a universal language, so getting to the parent should be...
But it is, but there's also the CEO, there's that, there's that language piece of it that S-VAC requires that we really need to make sure we address. So, you know, and like, to explain that for, to parents who may not have experienced our educational society, our educational system, too, is important. Like, this is how math is, this is how we're deemed with success. This is what success looks like in math right now here. I mean, we have to explain it to like, you know, sometimes they have to explain it to me. You know what I mean? Because it doesn't look the same way, math doesn't look as successful as it did when we were in school. It may have been more successful now than it was then.
Is there anything we can do as a board to kind of help address that?
Excuse me?
Anything we can do as a board to help address that? I mean, you're already addressing the parents. Is there anything we need to do collectively, individually?
I mean, I think the more we get the word out about the importance of, you know, talking to your kids about what they're doing in school, how they can support, communicating. Certainly, we want to ensure that we have, especially with our MLL parents, that they feel comfortable coming into the school, that they feel comfortable communicating with us. And that's, a lot of times, that's on us. And we're, I'm working, I just, I meet with the MLL team now once a month, and that's a big topic of conversation. Like, who did you follow up with? Because those parents who don't respond to the email, we know, you got to make that call. You know, you got to, you got to say, because they might get an email, even if it's in the home language, and they don't understand what you're even referring to. So you need to do that. And now that we have a much more robust team, they have the time to do that, which is important. So, thanks for that, teacher. And if you want to give me one, that's great. All right, so all that works, right? So, we get to post-high school debt. So, we've done very well. And then, just want to highlight a couple of those great things that we see. Apple is that proficiency in world language. I know it's too hard to see on the board, it is in your packet. We have a large amount of students getting the seal of bi-literacy. And you look at that number on the bottom, is that number on this one too? We're fourth in the DURG of districts in our DURG with the percentage at the seal of bi-literacy. And we're also 14th out of the 108 districts in the state who would take part in the seal of bi-literacy. So that's great. So our world language program is really thriving and we want to continue that. So that's, we want to continue to do. As far as our AP stats, they continue to be very strong. Slight dip in the amount of students who took AP courses. But if you look at the number of AP exams taken, it wasn't as precipitous a dip at all. And probably the most important number is the number below that, which is the number and percent of exams with a 3-plus score. So 81% of those exams, kids got a 3 or greater, which is to get college credit. So that's pretty phenomenal. And almost half of our senior class got a 3 plus on an AP exam. So, definitely, those students that we're, that are taking those challenging courses are successful in those courses. And we'll be coming to you for another one in a couple of weeks.
Mike, didn't we add another school?
What?
For AP, didn't we add another school last year? That was giving us AP credits.
Oh, that's the next one. That's dual credit. That's dual credit. Thank you for teeing me up, Dennis. So, next thing is early credit, early college experience. So, this is tied to credits. If they get, if they take the class here and they get a certain grade, they automatically get the credit. So, last year, we had 17 dual-credit classes offered. And there were 249 students who received credit for college while they were here at Massey.
We added Southern 2024, that's why you see the jump from 168.
And the asterisk. Any other questions?
We added more courses this year.
Oh, and this year we have. Keep on going with that. All right, and it's, you know, and finally, with the postgraduate plans, you look at that column in the middle about entering four-year college in a two-year or vocational. We're at 87%. That, certainly we encourage students to continue their education after Massey. It's a little lower than we've seen in the last couple of years. You know, I think there's a lot to add to that. You also look like we have 2% entering the armed services last year. We were less than 1% the other years. So if you put that into, into play, it's about equal. And you know, we have a lot of, not a lot, we have a number of students who choose to stick a year off, whether it was for financial reasons or they're taking a gap year, right? You know, there's a lot more of that conversation happening. And I don't necessarily think that's a terrible thing for many kids. And our dropout rate continues to be less than 1%, which is great. So finally, you know, a couple of weeks ago, when I was here with the high-quality instructional model, talked about these three things. So there's the vision, which is our vision statement. You know, the mission statement is what you all really provide for us, is you as a board, and this is a town, really provides the resources, the staff, to allow learners to grow, for them to be creative, for them to communicate. And then finally, that high-quality instructional model is really what is our focus now, every day with every class, to really move our students forward so that not just meet, but they also exceed grade levels. And that's what this is really all about, these efforts. So there goes the official question.
Questions for Mike? Go.
Strong work.
Thank you, Mike.
Thanks, thanks, thank you.
Jordy, spoken to the public yet? Mike, are these going out to the public or will be?
Yeah, it'll be, I'll, I'll, it'll be on the website tomorrow. We'll keep our podcast, we've been sitting a lot some of the time.
We're going to tell you the link to tonight's agenda.
Yeah.
Okay. With the presentation.
Thank you. Okay, Mike, thank you for that. There's no unfinished business, so we're going to move to new business, approval of the human resources budget transfer. Can I have a motion to approve the human resources budget transfer as presented at tonight's meeting? Christine, sent in by Dennis. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you very much, motion passes. Policies first review, Christine?
Yep, so, I may rely on Sheila because I was in at the last meeting. So the policies for first review is a new policy that provides guidance for individuals with a vested interest in lodging or complaining about instructional material used in the classroom or available in the school library, media center, and the process that the board will follow. The draft forms are exactly, they're drafts. Cave is still working out with the Connecticut Association of School Librarians for feedback. And the forms are for the district to apply their policy. Anything else on that, Sheila?
Nope.
Okay. Policy, library collection development and maintenance, a new policy that documents the process that our library and media specialists manage the collection. And the third is library display and program, a new policy that recognizes the work of our library media specialists in providing library displays and programs to meet the needs of the student population they serve.
Just like to add, want to thank Jamie Sherry and the, our library media specialists at K-12 for their support in making sure that this policy, these three policies reflect what we're doing in our schools.
I like that we're getting ahead of it a little bit, yeah. All right, so we'll have a second review next meeting. Any questions on that at all?
Yeah? I just have a general policy question. Like, a lot of this stuff comes from Cave, right? How much, is it ever tweaked from, you know what I mean? We get it from Cave and it's cookie cutter or whatever, but do you ever like tweak it or take stuff out?
We add our own words, our own sentences, our own, yes.
We use it as a guide. Sometimes we take it directly from there, sometimes we tweak it to meet the needs of our district, not what, but we use it as a base.
Yeah. And Alan, they vet it too, with their, their attorneys and all that Cave does. So it's kind of a added benefit. That it's already, it's already legally vetted by their, their attorneys.
And sometimes we tweak it to meet our needs.
The names of certain things may be different in our district than in the sample, but the, the actual law that's put in place that we're putting this policy in, anything that's on that, for sure, is in the policy. We're not taking out the language that's reflecting the state statute.
It's customizing it.
Correct. Customizing.
Which is appropriate, yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else on the policies? Okay, next on our agenda is an executive session. I just want to let everyone know that this is part of the superintendent's policy to go into executive session for his performance evaluation. Three times a year, we will take no action when we come out. We'll come back out here to adjourn. You don't have to wait for us. It could be, could be five minutes or five hours, Joe. So, that being said, can I have a motion to enter into executive session to discuss the superintendent's performance evaluation and to invite Superintendent Cobza to attend?
Sorry, questions?
All right, Dennis, seconded by Greg. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Unanimous, we're going into executive session at 8 o'clock. Our next meeting is November 3rd.